Try to try now. It's like pulling teeth.
It should have been with the managers. They should have been giving it to each other and or should have been here.
But at the worst case.
Well, here's the here's the deal.
We could we could run this in a week.
Way back when, Gene Decker was an in-house manager. He I think Gene was pretty good, keeping records. Did he have any file cabinet?
Never seen these boxes.
Hey, it's three o'clock, so I'm gonna call the meeting.
Here, nobody knows what they're.
If you have one of these, please turn it to silence so we don't have any interruptions during the meeting. And let's start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And do you have a sheet for us to sign?
Yes.
I will.
And you're gonna introduce.
I am.
Is it me or is it hot in here?
It's hot in here.
It's hot in here.
I'm gonna just call the roll real quick. We've got our attorney here, Tony Piers. Supervisor Tinkle, I'm Supervisor Feinberg, Supervisor Guy, Supervisor Flaherty, our district manager, Chris Schumaker, and our have a new title, Stephen.
Finance director.
Finance Director Stephen Blue.
Finance Director.
And with that, let's start with people that wish to speak. And let me just say, if anyone wishes to address the board, there's sheets in the back that you should fill out and give to one of these two gentlemen.
Great.
We have six cards in for public comment today. Joe Schofield, Pelican Preserve signs and turnover.
Can you hear me?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, great. I gave Chris some letters I wrote and pictures, which I hopefully he's he's passed out at this point. The first thing I would like to address is the Track L conveyance. And I'm just gonna read this to don't lose track and get it done quickly. But I said, "A survey of the community within Track L section of Pelican Preserve indicates many existing problems. These include sidewalks and cracks in the slab, holes created by rotted wood left in the surface of the sidewalk, of the sidewalks, and sections that have settled, leaving uneven sections. There are curbs and gutters with multiple cracks and missing chunks of concrete, landscaping with dead and dying shrubs and trees, lack of mulch, exposed irrigation pipes and open PVC piping sticking out of the ground. The Casilla neighborhood is far from completion as it is the newest section of Pelican Preserve, also including Prado and Pastoria. Pastoria? These areas will be under construction for a long time, perhaps years. This means heavy construction traffic driving through the neighborhoods to get to these construction sites for quite a period of time. To get to Casilla, these trucks must navigate from the construction entrance off Gateway through Prado and three circle intersections. The trucks have difficulty have a difficult time making these turns in these tight circles and damage the curbing and at times the landscaping in addition to the road surfaces. This includes damage to the first layer of the road, which in a number of areas now has holes going through into the sand or the subsurface under the or the foundation of the road. And these these continue to grow larger, and they're a hazard not only to the residents, but also to the construction trucks, I would imagine. I would suggest that when Track L is eventually turned over to the CDD, that specific clauses in an agreement exclude the Casilla neighborhood and all roads used by the construction trucks as they continue to be damaged and and will be until construction is completed. There should also be consideration for the same to the roads in Prado and Pastoria. I further suggest that a bond be required for damages related to construction for that materialize for a period of time. I put down five years. I understand the board really does have bonds that they get for about three years. In any event, additionally, sufficient time should be allowed for the community to finish their inspection. This includes volunteers that have been put together and assembled to go through the neighborhood and document and take pictures of the issues that we have in curbs, in sidewalks, and in the streets. And lastly, I'm suggesting to the board that there should be signs installed at the entrance to Carina Circle, at that circle intersection on Cypress Grove, and also on the entrance to Julia Drive. There are signs at the first entrance to Batterita and also to the first entrance into Julia. And those signs, I think, would be recommended to be put on the rest of those two roads because they also enter into the neighborhood. The second issue I want to talk about is the signs that are on Pelican Preserve Boulevard. It's my understanding that Lennar WCI may be required to remove the signs from their current location. As I'm speaking before further conversation in the agenda item, I'm not sure where that will go, but I have some comments. Placing them further off the road, as was suggested at the last meeting, could result in major landscaping changes, which may or may not be legal, but certainly will require a lot of work. They will not enhance the beauty of the drive into the community, not only for the residents, but perhaps more importantly, prospective buyers who will miss the opportunity to see the beauty of coming into the neighborhood. It is it is it is an impressive sight to see the beauty and the landscaping, and Mother Nature's done a great job enhancing all that for us. Placing signs on Veneto Drive, which I've heard could be a possibility, would more than likely have the same negative impact on residents, and again, more importantly, prospective buyers, as it would highlight the commercialism of the Lennar WCI and detract from the beauty of the drive, the lakes, and the fountains in those lakes. A single sheet, two-sided, four-color bleed flyer handed out to folks coming through the entry gate, going to the sales center would perhaps be a much better marketing tool than the signs that are existing. That flyer could list and emphasize the amendments and include a map to the sales center. The flyer could be more respectful and would be more respectful of the nature and the beauty of that drive into the sales center. Perhaps a couple of directional signs might might be helpful, but the fact is, there are already signs in the community directing traffic to the sales center, and I don't think that they're needed. But if you had that flyer and had a little map on it, obviously, that would help people. My thought is, if people can figure out where the gate is to get into Pelican Preserve, coming from wherever they come, they certainly can find the sales center inside the community. And the pictures are there, and I thank you.
Thank you.
Five minutes, exactly. Next, next is Phil Meezy, Pelican, sale signs.
I'm here to comment on the agenda item on the signs on Pelican. Phil Meezy from representing P-PAC. There is no question that an overwhelming number of the residents in Pelican Preserve would like those signs gone immediately. You heard from Joe today, and there are other residents from Pelican Preserve who are here, and that's what they would like to see happen. And P-PAC was prepared to recommend that to the board for the following reasons. First, the residents believe the signs are unattractive, obtrusive, and greatly detract from the appearance of the community. They appear to be superfluous, frankly, because any cars coming in the gate when they finally get to the sales office are gonna get the same information that the signs have on them. Over the course of fifteen years or sixteen years, WCI has sold built and sold eighteen hundred houses, and they didn't have those kinds of signs there. And then further, we believe that WCI Lennar may have put those signs in without getting required permits now, and also that the signs may be in violation of code as far as where they should be placed. Lennar, I should mention, disputes that that contention, but it appears that that may be true. Yesterday, Lennar proposed a compromise concerning the signs. Given that if they're asked to remove the signs immediately, they apparently might have the power to reinstall them both on property that they own, which would be on Veneto Drive, and also on the sides of this further away from the sidewalks on Pelican Preserve Boulevard. So in light of that, I feel incumbent upon me, before I make a final recommendation on behalf of P-PAC, that I should go back to P-PAC and allow P-PAC to consider this compromise. Unfortunately, because of the sunshine laws, I can't do that until our meeting, which is next week, which would obviously delay this whole process. The compromise that WCI has offered is to remove eight of the advertising signs from Pelican Preserve Boulevard and locate a few of them, but not all of them, to Veneto Drive, which they own, and they could do that in any event. And there that would leave us with fewer four purely directional signs on Pelican Preserve Boulevard, just guiding people to the sales center. They believe people have trouble finding the sales center. I'd like to have the P-PAC consider this compromise and come back to the board, however I recognize that the board has the authority to just decide to do something today without hearing from P-PAC on that subject.
Thank you.
Next, Doug Zantor, Pelican Preserve Pond Group, turnover and conveyance.
Yes, my name is Doug Zantor, and I'm representing the Pelican Preserve Pond Group here with regard to the Casilla Phase One and Phase Two turnover. We have no issue with the walk-around items that needed to be corrected. That we are with Tetra Tech, we're convinced that they're completed. And we also have no issue with the storm drains. Okay? I'll just bring that up. We do have a we do want the aeration equipment to be inspected in working order before it's turned over to the district. And then there's another issue, and Bob didn't know, Bob Gephardt didn't know if it should be addressed now with Casilla or Carina, and that's with the flowway. When they built Casilla and they built Carina, they widened the flowway, and each of the contract two different contractors. And when they widened the flowway, they were both within spec of what they were talked to Tetra Tech, they were both within the spec they were told to do. But what has been created is a sandbar in the middle of the flowway. And we're concerned about that and what ramifications that might have going forward. And we think it will cause a problem. We're not experts in that, but we we think it should be looked into and could cause a problem. So that's what I will say about the turnover. Those are the two issues. One is aeration, and make sure it's in working order, and two is a sandbar that exists in the flowway between Casilla and Carina. So those are the issues. And the only other thing I was asked to bring up is that some of the conservation and areas and preserves are being turned over by the builder to the master HOA, and that's different than it's been in the past. So now the master HOA will control them as opposed to the builder. And and they can do that because they have two seats on the master HOA.
Say that again.
That the the conservation or preserves are being turned over from the builder to the master HOA.
Same difference.
But once they Bob's concerned, because in the future, the HOA will become the residents, and then they're responsible for that.
What is the permit called for? I thought it came over to us.
I think eventually it will come over to the district, but Bob believes this is the way to get around that and get it over to the HOA. And then going over then the HOA would have to negotiate with the district to resolve any issues.
Well, if I get and this, Bob Gephardt has emailed me, I've emailed him back with some information, have looked at some of the permit information. In the conservation areas in Metterita Phase Two A, I believe, there's a conservation track.
Is that what he's talking about?
I believe so.
It's a separate item, I'm sorry. It's a separate item.
And if they want me to briefly mention, then that land and the plat that area was dedicated to the Pelican Preserve Community Association, subject to any other easements that may exist on the plat. There are drainage easements in favor of the district dedicated over that conservation area track. The conservation area track was deeded too, but I'm always try to be really careful about using the term turned over versus deeded because there is there's significant difference. The conservation area track has been deeded from WCI Lennar, the developer Bay County Gateway, to the Pelican Reserve Community Association. It's still subject to the conservation easement in favor of South Florida. It's still subject to the drainage easement in favor of the Gateway Services CDD. There is a South Florida Water Management District permit for that area, and there was a monitoring and mitigation plan. A quick look at it today, when I saw some of the emails, I did not see any transfer of operational responsibility yet to the CDD under that permit.
Usually, on South Florida Water Management District permits, they have a list of conditions, two pages, and the second page and the second item from the second page on almost every permit I've seen specifically calls out, and there could be exceptions, and I haven't seen it, but every one of them call out that all ponds, wetlands are transferred to for operation and maintenance of Gateway Services CDD, and it doesn't say anybody else.
But the question is transfers, the transfer of the operating permit regardless of the ownership. And again, we have a drainage easement.
What it sounds like we got is a middleman.
It sounds like this is something that we need.
It just needs to be looked into.
Right.
That's all Bob wanted.
Exactly.
You know, we don't know the ramifications for the master HOA. We don't know the ramification for the history. It just needs to be looked in so we're all on the same page because it's changed from the way it was done in the past. That's that's.
And again, going back and looking at the plat, that conservation easement, excuse me, that conservation tract, it's OS, one of the OSs, was dedicated to the Pelican Reserve Community Association back on the plat originally. And so one argument is, I'm just both sides of the coin, is that since it's dedicated to the community association anyways, it should they should be the fee owner that does not transfer any permit. And then we go, if you start looking back at the permit, it does indicate the district will be the operating entity under that permit application, which includes water management and the conservation area. But on the South Florida page, the the South Florida permit has not yet been transferred to the CDD. And I did not see any document indicating that that's been requested. So that's one of those lingering permits as to who the.
That will have to be looked at in a few.
Yeah, and and also curious in going back and looking at the permit application, one of the assurances South Florida staff wanted was clarify the relationship between the district and the developer. And I tell you, the answer that I came back from the developer's engineer was mush, and South Florida accepted that mush. I've got to hear if anyone's look at it. I've never seen quite an answer in my life.
So this is really something that we need additional information on.
Yes.
Not something we can settle today.
It gets more even more complicated than that on these conservation areas. There's a five-year operating phase. The issue is, is it in the five-year operating phase, or is it out of the five-year operating phase? And if it's out of the five-year operating phase, which means it's monitored and checked and maintained, and it goes out on the five times three hundred and sixty-five, the eighteen-hundred day, who's gonna maintain it until it comes to us?
Yeah, and again, that's part of the question to be researched because.
That's the question.
Well, and that's part of the, I think, if you direct the staff to look into it, because I'm looking at the permitting portal for South Florida for this permit. The last activity was in March, June, March of two thousand and fourteen with one of the monitoring reports, and there's nothing more after that.
Was that the fifth year monitoring report or the third?
That was the bear with me, I actually have it here with me.
Can can we just direct staff to look into that? Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Eighth annual monitoring report.
So it's three years past the five-year plan.
Who is next?
I was thinking maybe it'd help if I said I was with Pelican Preserve, but when I saw him, maybe it doesn't help. But anyway, I just wanted to grab a quick couple of points here. This will be the third meeting I attended. The first one was Mr. Tinkle with Zinner and a couple other associates. Was not greeted very well. This is after Mr. Tinkle's famous report that he wrote. He found out when we first met that there was a lot of information that he did not know. He did not know there was amended contract. There were several other things that he did not know, was not brought to his attention before he wrote the report or anything else. Then a few weeks later, when I attended the meeting this last time, it's come to find out that a lot of that information was not passed on again, and there were a lot of comments made where you guys did not even have or know that there was amended contract again. So I'm hoping this time before the vote, you vote on paying our retainage, that everybody has read through all the contracts, has discussed it thoroughly, and really understand what's going on. From day one, we saw a lot of material from you guys other than just meters. I mean, we've been in Fort Myers there for over fifteen years. We do business with you guys, and we have no problems. Chris will attest to that. Our person foremost concern is with providing you with that quality product. And yes, there were some issues that started out long with this contract, and this is this little five-minute speech or anything else is not the time to go into it, but believe me, there are many contractual issues that can be brought up on both sides, and some that, you know, quite frankly, breach contracts and conflict of interest and a lot of other things that were not forthcoming when we signed the contract. It's neither here nor there at this point in time, which is we're trying to get paid. We did a sweep. The sweep said everything was in working order at this point in time. You have over a ninety-nine point three percent product that's working that well. So it is working and doing what everybody wanted it to do. We're not going anywhere. You have a twenty-year warranty. Any of the issues that come up with the MIUs or anything else are being replaced, and the system's working great. And so I greatly stress that you guys find it hard to do the right thing and let common sense prevail and pay our retainage. Like I said, I think we've been patient, we listened, we cared, and we want you right, and we think we do have that product. And that's really I want my own one say there.
Thank you. Chris, this is on the next agenda, is that correct?
It's on this agenda.
It's on this agenda.
This one.
It's this agenda. Margaret, one.
Oh.
Margaret, one comment. A matter of correction. I was aware of the amendment. What I was not aware of was the connotation that the amendment was the grounds for a certificate of substantial completion.
And I'm sorry, we'll get there when we get to that agenda item. I think we have one more speaker.
Two more.
Two.
Jan Biers, P-PAC Conveyance Working Group.
Jan Biers with Pelican Preserves, and I'm also spearheading the P-PAC Conveyance Working Group, which came into existence less than a month ago as a result of understanding that the conveyance issues for all of Track L, which were supposed to happen in the fall, were going to want Lennar wanted to happen now. To this date, we did an assessment of Cypress Grove and submitted a report to Chris with photos. A lot of them are landscaping issues, and there's a bug in the system. We've been trying, I've been trying, eight times to get the master landscaping plan from WCI slash Lennar. Chris has tried unsuccessfully as well. We've not been able to get it because we want to do a comparison. What I did find out was that Ameriscape was told by WCI to pull up any dead plants and not replace them because it looked better naked than with dead plants. This is prior to the Lennar formal purchase. It's a little disconcerting. We were quite surprised by the deterioration of the beauty of Cypress Grove and a lot of other Track L issues. We tried to call Lennar, they've been unresponsive to our emails and my voicemails. The last P-PAC meeting, when we learned that the rest of Track L was being expedited for conveyance issues, we formed a working group. We've got a former construction engineer here on our working group. We wanted to make sure that we were raising issues that were true engineering issues. What we didn't expect was the inundation of emails from residents throughout Track L. Over two hundred emails have been sent with over four hundred and fifty pictures of major curbing issues, gouges that are huge, cracks in the curbs, there's safety issues, there's continuing landscaping issues. Each of the monuments in in Track L, the curbing all around it is cracked, in some cases crumbling. And Herb, if you would just verify that what I'm saying is right, because I'm not a construction engineer. If these cracks and these decayed or gouged curves aren't addressed with replacements or strong repairs, what's gonna happen in the future?
They're gonna continue to deteriorate, and then you're gonna have issues with undermining. Jan, he's gonna speak, he's gonna pull out a card.
Come on over. Thanks.
And you might want to have him pull out a card because you have forty-five seconds.
I can talk really fast.
All right, we'll handle it.
All right. WCI made promises to a lot of folks in Track L, including me, when we had our walkthroughs that the curbs were cracked, gouged, there were many issues. They said, "We'll fix those prior to final lift." The final lift happened, and the residential curb areas and some of the common areas were never addressed and have been ignored. The curb issues, the crack issues, the monument issues, the landscaping, it's ubiquitous throughout Track L, and it would be a terrible disservice to the CDD and to the residents of Pelican Preserves to convey this track, any part of this track at this point, because you're gonna be inheriting a lot of debt if Lennar fails to make the repairs necessary to bring these to a decent condition.
Ten seconds.
My recommendation as part of the P-PAC Conveyance Working Group is, please don't convey anything yet. I'm more than willing to drive around on a golf cart and show you guys what we've looked at. I've been appalled at the condition of a lot of the curbs and sidewalks, safety issues too. But it's it's kind of overwhelming to see all the damages that have been done. Either it was a faulty truckload of concrete curbing. Continuing issue is, we still have construction trucks going all throughout Track L, also doing more damage to curbs and sidewalks, in some cases, residential property. And I'm in favor of taking the signs down.
Say again, I didn't understand that. You're in favor?
I'm in favor of taking those Lennar signs down immediately.
Oh.
It's on.
Track L's not on the agenda.
We have.
Track L's not on the agenda today.
Well, we can talk about that.
But Casilla One and Two aren't.
Okay, well.
Casilla One and Two aren't with Charles Mann's here to address those. Mr. Meezy, will you make that address when your agenda comes up?
Sure, since I'm on the clock, and I'm guessing our comments about attorney exemptions were just a joke, and so I think I'm gonna be limited to the time. So we can go in more detail when they come up. Briefly, again, Charles Mann for the record, representing Lennar and WCI. On the signs, I would certainly echo the last statement that Mr. Meezy said with respect to tabling this, as I understand that P-PAC has, as their committee under the district, has notice requirements and were unable to have a meeting. When I left the meeting two weeks ago, I was provided with the letter from the Residents Alliance, which I believe has, I don't know, eight hundred and some members, and I think is intended to represent the interests of the various Pelican Preserve residents. And that relayed, and I thought that was a very good letter. I thought it, in my mind, the first impression I have is, and what I communicated to my client is, this is inviting a discussion and compromise, which I think occurred, albeit within the last few days. But I read through some of the the comments that were provided, and Lennar did meet with, I believe, Mr. Meezy and and Ms. Brock. Do I have that right? Okay. Rookie, I'm terribly sorry. So and 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 I think the proposal was accurately relayed, and so we would also support tabling this for another two weeks and not ask the board to take, you know, any action at this time. In addition, Mr. Piers and I have circulated some drafts of a proposed license agreement. We received some comments from Mr. Piers as well, I think most of which we incorporated fine. One of the ones was an increase on the insurance from a million dollars to five million, which I personally thought for this was a little excessive, but presuming it could be done, we didn't really have a problem, and we forwarded to Lennar's risk management, which I believe they're able to provide that, although there's some language changes. So there's probably a little bit of more slight back and forth, which could be accomplished certainly in the next two weeks. So we would concur with, you know, P-PAC's request to postpone a decision, allow them to meet, and maybe we can. allow them to meet, and maybe we can have, LeNar, WCI representatives can have further discussions, if appropriate, with the Residents Alliance and PPAC or whoever is appropriate. Briefly, with respect to Casella one and two, I think everything's been summarized with respect to the SAMBAR, and I think, my belief is, that would be better addressed with the Corina two, but I think the summary of what happened was fairly accurately portrayed, at least in a general fashion. So, if there's issues with respect to Casella one and two, otherwise, we can talk about those when the agenda item comes up, certainly. And then lastly, although I didn't, wasn't really aware of this, and, you know, have only limited knowledge, I did listen to the issue of the preserves, and I will say with respect to everything except for the engineer's letter being mushed, which I have not read it, don't know if that's correct or not, I completely agreed with Mr. Pierce's assessment. I mean, we did have some tracks that were dedicated to the association.
You still don't say that too often, Charles.
I know, so I wanted to make sure. That should not count against my time in telling you this is correct, but in any event, briefly, when the tracks are dedicated to the association, there probably will be an obligation in the documents to convey the fee simple interest to the association, being a separate issue from the operational responsibility. So, that probably explains that. I don't think there's anything nefarious. Frankly, if we could get around, if we thought we could get around everything easily by giving everything to Pelican Preserve, I'd be giving all this other stuff to them instead of coming up here and addressing every two weeks each of these comments. So, I think it's just a nuance in however that path was gone, for the most part. So, I just offer that, and then.
Chris, do we have any other speakers?
No.
Margaret, a good question on this one. That can't wait. We're on the clock, and he just left. Mike, we're on the clock with a notice from Lee County.
Hold on. Hold your thought. With the board's indulgence, I'd like to move the signs, the Pelican Preserve signs, up on the agenda so that we can address that, since we have people here that are here for that issue, because we had gotten a notification from the city of Fort Myers. Tony, would you like to address that, the letter that we received?
Apparently, it was a notice of violation that was received today.
I've seen that. Just came today.
I just received it today, I guess, with regards to the signage. And Michael has inquired, made inquiry, asked to the purpose of that basis, and they, Michael, my understanding is your communications with Lee, Fort Myers code enforcement, is that that relates to the signs in the district's road right away, all the signs, all signs?
Correct.
And so, the city is asking compliance with their code, and we are on a ten-day clock. Is that correct?
Yes.
Just a little condition to it. It does offer the opportunity for a variance request. However, a stipulation that I was not aware of is that to request the variance, they have to go through, they being the developer, have to go through the Pelican Preserve Design Review Committee.
Which is controlled by the developer, actually.
Isn't that convenient?
Yeah.
My understanding is it's controlled by the developer.
Okay, I was not, were you aware of that, Mike? I wouldn't have aware of that.
And it's also subject to whether or not it's otherwise allowable under the city's codes.
I too talked to Ryan Conrad today and had a good conversation with him, and this started, I thought, you know, I find it interesting that you were driving around and had the occasion to drive into Pelican Preserve looking for ten signs. That amazed me. They were called in. It was a complaint. So, that's how this came about. But their position is, is that they, this, the signs are in violation of chapter one twenty-six of Fort Myers City Code. However, they do make the opportunity for a variance. However, the variance has to go first through that committee to then go to city of Fort Myers. And he said they would entertain that, which then would open up the possibility, if they allow it, to have a discussion of a license agreement, which he would be more than willing to accept if they allowed the variance. So, it sounds to me like this whole thing is to get it going because of this ten-day notice. The ball is not in anybody's park but ours, because it's our road. The only thing I know to do is that we can ask for, is that the parties, and basically this time right now would be WCI, LeNar, to go to that committee and as quick as possible get on their agenda and let city of Fort Myers know you're coming in with the variance if you're choosing to go that route, or...
Madam Chairman, I have checked. Mr. Tinkle.
I have my opinion, Bill. I have my opinion.
Yeah, you have had, you've had your opinion on a lot of things, and I'm getting, I'm kind of getting tired.
And don't go there, Bill.
I'm getting tired of it.
Don't go there, Bill.
I'm getting tired of it.
Mr. Attorney, would you advise him of my rights?
Can...
He's not advising to stop, he's disagreeing with you, and the board members have the option.
He's telling you he wants me to stop, and I ain't stopping. I got the floor, Bill. You can just sit back and relax and enjoy yourself.
And you need to allow the other board members to have the time.
And they can't. My point is, this is in our court right now.
Correct.
We have to do something.
Madam Chairman.
You have the floor.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen of the board and of the audience, honor about June the twenty-third of this year, WCI or their associates erected eleven or twelve signs on land owned by this gateway service of CDD without authorization. The residents of Pelican Preserve want those signs gone. The WCI offer of a compromise is no compromise, it's merely a delay tactic. WCI has no legal right to retain any of these signs on Pelican Preserve Boulevard. A threat to mount those, move those signs to the other place should be understood for just what it is, a threat. So therefore, Madam Chairman, I move that these signs be removed within the next five days, either by WCI or not by them, by our staff.
That's your motion?
That is my motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second your discussion.
Mrs. Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you. All right. I'm looking at this violation. You're a lawyer. Why wouldn't you know the rules and know that the city of Fort Myers says you have to go through this? I am confused, okay, that as a lawyer, you don't know this information, and yet you come to us, even last time, and saying that the signs were okay, but the city of Fort Myers is telling us that they're not okay.
Okay. As I believe Mr. Meesey said before, I think WCI's position is that they are in compliance, and we disagree. I received that notice, which I think was issued today, a few minutes before he came here. In my distant past, I've done a lot of code enforcement. I have one problem there, is it does, it just says, "The city takes the position, these are not in compliance with chapter one twenty-six," which has a lot of stuff in it. Usually, when you get a good citation, it says with specificity what the city believes you violated. So, I'm still, and I guess a couple of people have spoken with the city. I believe WCI has tried to call the code enforcement officer and has not spoken with them yet, but I would like for them to explain exactly why they believe that. To my mind, in my experience, that was insufficient. In terms of some of these issues, the signs, and we, by the way, I'm not a sign expert, I suppose, but we, after the last meeting, we asked our contractor, you know, "Is he sure they were correct?" Because I think the issue of permits came up last time, too, and his belief was, "These are consistent with what is in every other community and is fine." Now, I will tell you from my own personal experience, things that ninety-nine times out of the last hundred are okay by the city, when complaints and uproar happens, all of a sudden, the city takes it. This is my own personal residence issue, neighbor, actually, irony there, is all of a sudden not in compliance. So, I don't know what happened here. I agree with Mr. Tinkle that this was precipitated by calls, which is fine. I understand there's some people upset and everything. So, as of right now, till I know otherwise, we believe they are in compliance, but we are trying to get, there was no ability to get to the bottom of that before this meeting. But what I would say, and why I stood back up here, is there probably would be the opportunity for variances additional times, so on and so forth. However, in terms of the clock, if in fact, the district is going to be put in some jeopardy because of the ten days elapsing, then WCI would remove the signs until we got this worked out, if that was absolutely necessary. I don't think it is. These notices come out, frankly, thirty days in my experience is the typical time to come into compliance. So, the ten days put in that letter, I think, is a little bit interesting and suspect, but nonetheless, you know, if over the next week or two, you know, more time wasn't granted to get a variance, which again, it'd be very unusual if that wasn't done, I'd be very surprised, then we, of course, will go ahead and do that until some works out, because we, I do understand if the district was in a jeopardized position because of a compliance issue, we would, we would need to address that, and we would.
Margaret, question.
I just thought I had to hold here. Thank you. Okay. My other thing is, when you go into Pelican Preserve and see these signs, I mean, they bombard you. It's one right after the other. There's no space in between. So, that seems to be, you know, it does destroy the landscaping, because all you see are signs. You don't see any landscaping.
And so, and I think that's part of the compromise. All, my understanding is the eight advertising signs, and by the way, I, everyone's going to have a different opinion. I read the official letter to WCI from the Residents Alliance, which raised these issues. I thought the tone and everything else invited discussion. There wasn't anger or anything. It certainly, you know, expressed the concerns, and that, I think, is the best way for LeNar to sit down and address those. And that's why LeNar has offered to remove the eight signs. The letter that I read, and again, I'm just going from the letter I read, and that's hard to respond to everything that people say, but did not see such an issue with the four directional signs. Now, I did hear briefly before that folks thought that if you come in the gatehouse, they should be able to get people to the right place. Logically, I don't necessarily disagree with that. However, the directional signs were precipitated by a number of complaints from prospective customers who said they couldn't find the darn place. So, don't know if it works out or doesn't work out, but what I did take in the letter from the Residents Alliance was, there wasn't such a strong objection to the four directional sign, and I believe you're referring to the eight advertising signs, I think, right now, if I'm not mistaken. And so, that's why WCI's tried to sit down, LeNar, WCI's tried to sit down and talk about a compromise to move, reduce the number of them and move the other reduced number to a different location. I also briefly, in terms of the statements about the opportunity to move them being viewed a threat, I tried to indicate that was not intended as a threat, but I think if I sat here and didn't say anything, in terms of, "By the way, we have this other property that we could just move a hundred signs to," you might get angry at me for not at least bringing that up. So, I thought I'd be remiss if I didn't at least bring that up. Again, if it was viewed as a threat.
Mr. Mann, let...
Yes.
Are you...
I'm finished.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I got going.
I would have one question, and I actually would like to ask Mr. Meesey this, and that is...
Phil Meesey?
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to just have the signs removed. Is PPAC happy with that?
Well, I can't talk...
I know, I'm just...
PPAC was originally happy with that. That's what we were going to propose, and so if the board decides to do that, I think PPAC would be okay with it. You know, my only concern was if there was a possible compromise, and if we had what I view as a threat, that they would put these signs elsewhere, we probably should consider that. But I personally...
PPAC would still have the opportunity to work with LeNar, but I don't, for me personally, I don't, I'm not willing to allow the district to be, go beyond the ten-day notice and have a violation. So, I just wanted your opinion on that.
Yeah, yeah. So, I think that most, you know, an overwhelming number of the residents want the signs gone, so if the signs were gone, I think that would be okay.
Thank you. You had a question?
Yeah, Charles, again, looking at one eighteen six two seven D. Who's the chairman of the PP Design Review Committee? And if you don't know, was application made to the PPAC Design Review Committee such that a permit could be requested from city of Fort Myers?
To date?
Yes.
I don't believe so.
So, we went and put the signs with not having knowledge of what one twenty-six caused for?
Yeah, if, again, if the code and the little bit of language in the notice is accurate, and I'm not sure it is or isn't, I didn't even pull up one twenty-six before I came in here, I just read the notice, and there is a requirement to go before there, then yes, that would be, that would be true. And I just, with all the different...
To get us off the hook, then the proper deal would be, if you so elect, would be to take your position back to the Design Review Committee to get their permission to go and file a variance, should you accept to do that.
We would do that right away, and I would also say with respect to Madam Chairperson's statement about not having the district in jeopardy, I'd just reiterate that if the ten days elapsed and there was no extension, we would do that, so the district wouldn't be in jeopardy.
Madam Chairman, let's call the question, please.
Okay, I will do that.
Tony's got a question.
There's a...
Question, please.
We have a motion on the floor that the signs be removed by what date?
Five days from today, either by the owner of WCI, owner of the signs, or by our staff.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. I'm going to call the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, the motion carries, and the signs shall be removed, and you have the opportunity to work with the PPAC and the community to work something out, but I don't want the, I don't want the CDD violate.
Madam Chairman, what I would suggest is that a written letter be sent to an RWCI requiring the removal. And secondly, a couple additional thoughts. One is that one thing that wasn't mentioned by Mr. Mann was the exposure liability of the district to the extent that the signs are not compliant with codes. Secondly, I recognize that maybe the contractors say this is how they've done it in all other areas. I have heard that argument so many times by contractors, and you find out they should have obtained a permit. There's no indication that exemption qualified, or else we would have heard that today. Typically, when somebody says, "You were cited for erecting a sign without a permit," they'll say, "Either I have it, or gee, I don't have it, and I'd rather ask for forgiveness than approval," or there's an exemption. I think I'm hearing the middle, I'm asking for forgiveness as opposed to approval, because there are no permits, I'm aware of, that have been applied for or issued, and I'm not aware of any exemption, Charles.
Yeah, I don't think we're cited for not having a permit, though.
No, but I guess the question was, I asked at the last board meeting, "Please provide copies of all permits for whether or not there are any exemptions." And so, I think that that's important consideration as to how it's been handled to date. And one other aspect is, the fact that a citizen, a group of individuals filed for complaint with code enforcement, no nefarious motive should be ascribed to that. That happens all the time.
Right.
Just my observation.
And we can get a letter out to Mr. Mann and LeNar?
Yeah, you can write it right now and hand it to them.
Yeah, five, let's define the five days. It's five days.
I'd say five business days is appropriate.
Yeah, five business days.
I think that's appropriate.
Okay. Let's see. District Engineer.
For the record, Danny Nelson, Tetra Tech District Engineer. I've got nothing to present, but if you have any questions on anything?
I don't. Does anyone else have any questions for Danny? I see none. District Counsel, you're up.
A couple items. I, we have good news from Mr. Fedema, his opinion from the county attorney's office. I think I handed a copy to him that for the Light Bank Restoration Project, the torments will not be required. And so, he provided that email to the county staff and provided a copy to me a year or so ago. So, one more little hurdle, you know, there's always little hurdles, but that's one more hurdle. And John went through his analysis, and I appreciate him providing that analysis, which is what positions we've taken all along.
Did you share that with Tetra Tech?
I believe I have. I think, and you've seen that, I think as soon as I got it, I sent along, and thank to everybody for all the reference on that, because it was a good team group effort. We have the validation here coming up, and then I mentioned the stipulation with the state attorney's office, and hopefully, everything we find, all six hundred forty-four megabytes of the documents, so, for the validation proceeding. I have received a number of documents from Charles with regards to various conveyances in Pelican Preserve, and I'll be working on those next week or so. Casella and Corina and Castoria, I think, more particularly. I think it's early, I guess, I have another question for the board members.
I have one to send, May. Could you have put...
Go ahead.
Mr. Attorney, has Lee County ever taken the roads?
No, but the WCI's delivered the deeds to them. My understanding is, and the deeds from the district will be delivered next week, so we should then all wrap it up.
Great. Good question. Thank you.
Two issues that...
Thank you for asking that question.
Two issues that are legal related. While Tony's got the good letter from Fedima, I've got not quite such a good letter from Sawtell.
Who's that? Who was that?
He's the guy that dots the i's and crosses the... He's the guy that dots the i's and crosses the t's and tells us that Lee County, how we do the laterals and the hardened surfaces.
He, hold on, just a minute, just get me.
He's a staff, staff guy.
Does he work for?
Lee County.
Fredima, does he work for him? Does he work with him?
Fredima's, he works Lee County.
He works in Development Services.
He works in Development.
Is that correct, Danny? And then Michael? The Development Services Department.
One, one of the options that we have seen in the field is a alternative, and I described it at the last meeting, of where they use the GeoWeb and fill it with rock and a mixture surface. That, according to Mister Sawtell, is a hardened surface. That is a hardened surface. The issue is, is he's got places in Lee County that's being done and it's not defined as a hardened surface. So, we still have an issue of how we proceed relative to the next eight ponds that if we go with this either GeoWeb or filter fabric and mix it with stone or not mix it with stone, if the top of that surface is stone, by Sawtell's deal, it's hardened surface. The only thing Fredima's action takes, as I really believe it reads, is that eliminates us from compensatory damages.
And that's still a laterals.
Laterals. So, it's, we got, still have, well, Fredima's news was good. Sawtell's is
And are you?
The opposite.
With Sawtell, or is this something that you have contacted him directly or are you working with staff?
I have sent a letter to Sawtell. He didn't respond to it. I sent a follow-up letter to Sawtell, was our pond, what our pond standards are and this, that and the other. And he didn't respond to it, so I sent it back to him again thinking that maybe he was just missing it. Only I CC'd a, a couple of people and then I got an immediate reaction. So, that's where the letter came from. I have passed this on, I believe, to everybody but the board because of the sunshine. I can't get it to you. But what I would like to do is have this copied to give to all the supervisors so they're aware of what the issues are. So, if Chris or somebody can copy that.
What you may want to do is next time you receive it, you want to send it to, send it to Chris and he can include it in the agenda package.
My, my question is, are, are you doing this on your own or are you working with staff?
Working with staff, trying to figure out what these next eight ponds are going to be as how we proceed. At last meeting, two meetings ago, we did not want to take and proceed with the more expensive, been called Cadillac design. So, we came back last meeting and I ran into obstacles that you didn't want to go with the lesser design. So, we're trying to find a happy medium of what the design.
And who is we?
Staff, we and the engineer.
Okay, and, and Danny, are you aware of the emails with Lee County, this gentleman by the name of Sawtell?
Yes.
Okay, so you've been involved in this?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Staff and Danny all know about it.
And if we recall, the last board meeting, we had indicated the next, not this meeting, but the next meeting.
Correct.
Will actually come back. So, I think what we're, what we're working on is we're going to show plan views of the lakes. We're going to show those areas that are more significant, showing probably something similar to the current method of repair, showing a cost for that and showing a separate cost for the areas that are less significant. And then what the cost would be if you use that entire more significant cost to show what savings you can actually see with that. So, that's, that's what we're planning on, on bringing.
Next, next meeting. Then the, the second part of that, to, to, to make this even more complicated, and this is a, I believe a legal issue and we got to watch this one, is, is that Lennar has sent out to homeowners in Hampton Park notification that they are going to be taking actions of repair.
Who's they, who, who's going to take action?
Lennar.
Lennar.
Lennar's going to be taking actions. They are experiencing what they call blowouts, erosion problems, very similar to what we had. Only they're attributing them to the bubbler design, which we have taken both in Pelican Preserve and in Gateway. They are terminating that design and they are going to put in pipe down to the lake, which is what we have taken the position that's a no-no. And I know what's coming next. They're going to be coming to us, wanting us to take over that. And we better head this off at the pass because effective tomorrow, today, they're starting work on tearing out all these bubblers and reinstalling pipes on lots in Hampton Park. We need to get a hold of this real quick before this turns into a nightmare. Our experience has been, that is the exact way we want it done. But the issue is, comes down to, where do you put the bubbler? If you put the bubble up at the top of the slope, right above where the stone would go, let's say in our design, probably would be just about as ineffective. Ours aren't located. Ours are located back up and they have a chance to be able to flush out. Now, there are some exceptions. We have one house over in Walden Lake where I think he's got everything but the kitchen sink on his house hooked in to one bubbler. Well, that hasn't got a snowball's chance in you know where. Too much water coming down and it is going to cause a problem.
So, you, you got this letter, I'm assuming, from somebody in Hampton Park?
Correct.
Have you passed this along to Chris and staff?
Yes.
Madam?
But I passed it to Tony because I feel it's an issue that is going to be coming back to us and I don't want them to come back. Well, you knew about it and didn't do anything.
And we get copies of that one too?
Yeah, Madam Chairman, what I would suggest is we had a brief, because this just happened today.
Right.
Well, last night, I think, is when they got the letter. I replied this morning early. You're up, really?
Very early.
Seven, seven and a half. I would suggest that, my question was, if this proposal or concept that Lennar's proposing to extend the pipes directly into the lake or pond is different than is approved by the district, then Lennar, WCI needs to be advised in writing to stop immediately. In all events, that extending the pipe into a lake or pond that is to be a district lake or pond needs to be approved by the district, the district first. Under our Perma-Criteria Manual, under our Surface Water Management Rule, they need to get our approval and if they're changing, if they are changing to the approved design, they need to come to the district for that. And I think Danny agrees with that. I think Michael and Chris agree with that too.
And since this just came out today, Chris, I'm going to put this in your hands to work with our district engineer and staff and contact Lennar and get, find out what is going on.
Mister Man, Mister Man has now been advised as behalf of Lennar and Charles, just be aware that a letter will probably be following.
Because this isn't something we'll resolve at this meeting today, so.
I think it's important to bring it to their attention before they begin the work, which is supposed to.
Well, I think there's a development order amendment that's in, is called for.
I agree. They need to stop.
I only stood up because I actually had some involvement in this when I was trying to find a fix and took some interest. Like Ed, I'm not a licensed engineer, but an engineer by, well, he's a retired licensed engineer. I'm not licensed, but my background is in engineering, but so, this is, and, and what I want to sit up here and just say is just before we have letters going back and forth, this was not, this was done with good motives. I got aware of this in terms of looking at some easement. These things were not functioning. Lawn service people were cutting off the little pop-ups and bubblers. Erosion was happening really bad, almost in an emergency situation. So, Lennar was trying to figure out what to do. This is clearly a problem with the district. I just asked before we start firing letters off back and forth, let's, let's sit down with the right person and sort of talk about the problem. It was in addressing an emergency situation, so.
Charles, we had that meeting about a month and a half ago with Baraco. They were very much aware of our position on this and they chose to ignore us.
Yeah, Madam Chairman, what I would suggest is.
Oh, what I'm talking about just came up like two weeks ago.
This is a month ago, at least.
Madam Chairman, all due respect is that due to the fact that Lennar's indicating the work was going to begin today, that we, the district is aware of that. The district needs to write a letter, notice and writing to not engage in that activity because it's not been approved.
Tony, it's more frustrating than that. I got this from a member of the community over there. We are the permitting authority over there. This should have been coming to us directly from Baraco, their engineer, and telling us they're doing this. That, that just, they're skipping the, the whole development order issue, skipping going to South Florida Water Management District and getting an amendment. It's going to be one of those things that has happened in Gateway for years and years and years. It's always after the fact.
And it's about time we put a stop to it.
And put a stop to it. I agree, Bill.
And that's what we've given.
And my, my thing is, is that, but Charles, we had a meeting a month and a half ago, right there in that little area, right there, we had the discussion. And we made our point clear to the fact that what was called for in the plans was not built at Hampton Park. So, we're not even.
Clarify, we.
Danny, Tyler, I don't know if Mike was here at that time. Chris?
I thought the bubblers were what were put there though. Are you saying they were placed in a different place than in the plans?
If you can see bubblers on the plans, let me know because maybe I've got a bad set of plans. It calls for laterals from four feet above the control elevation to four feet below the control elevation. And I dare you to find twenty-eight thousand of them. Find, find one.
And I understand that, you know, this has become, this has come to our attention, so we're concerned about it. We want to make sure that it's done right. We've given this direction to staff to work with you and resolve this, to make sure that whatever happens out there is done correctly. So, if you know of work being started, I would, it would be a really strong recommendation to you to make sure they stop.
That'd be fine. The, the work that I'm aware of was to address what I perceived or understood to be almost an emergency type erosion situation. So, again, and I just, I just came up here just because coming up two weeks and start yelling each, you know, I've been trying to, we, we're, I'm going to be here every two weeks and we got a lot of stuff going on, just.
Charles, it's the frustration that we had a very good discussion of this and it was simply ignored by the engineer, simply ignored.
Okay, I will see what I can determine after we get out, or learn after we get out of this meeting then.
But, and Madam Chairman, I think that, I think the direction is for staff to contest it from a staff perspective to send that notice to Lennar in writing to let them, you know, none of the works should proceed. They need to have a pre-application meeting and you can then talk about it, submit plans for your approval.
I think that's clear.
And agree.
I'm going to ask for a five-minute recess.
Thank you.